Okay, I want to call for order of the committee meeting for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Dr. Evers?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Board of Directors, the administration team here tonight, and members of the school community joining us. I have two items for the committee presentation this evening, but before I do, before we go into those two items, I do want to draw special attention and thank the efforts of three outgoing McGuffey School Board members, Mr. Jeff Ross, Mr. Dave Haynes, and Mr. Scott Harden. Words, words of thanks are not enough.
We bought you a cake.
Well, we do have, actually, I'll give to Mr. Liveheart, she bought that cake. We have another cake. We have two cakes tonight. So it's a twofer, but that's still, that's not enough for the hours. On behalf of our students, our staff, our community, what you've put into this district cannot be measured, it cannot be thanked enough, words cannot be thanked enough, but know that what I'm saying is heartfelt. And to ask everyone that is here tonight, I know Dave, you're with us, but I would like to give every one of them, Jeff, Dave, and Scott a round of applause.
And along those lines, before we go any further, Mr. Single, I had wanted a couple minutes.
I don't know. I didn't ask permission. I hope this is not being inappropriate, inappropriate in any way, but we do have a great McGuffey loss with a little girl. That's just, you know, was just yesterday, and I know it's one thing to say.
Microphone.
I know. I know it's one thing to say we're all praying, but it's kind of another to do it. So I'm just going to ask that we bow our heads in prayer for that family and for our McGuffey family. Our Father in Heaven, we just praise you for this day, so for this time we can come before your throne of grace. Father, we just ask you to cover the family of little Harmony, and we pray, Father, that they can be comforted by knowing that she's in the arms of Jesus. We thank you, Father, for watching over all of our students here, and we pray that you will be with them as many of them were close to her and are themselves still suffering this loss. Guide us through this difficult time as only you can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. So I always bring this up, but two years ago, we put together a new vision and mission for our district, something that we use to guide our decisions. And our mission, part, the first part of it is to be better today than yesterday. So we're always looking at ways in which we can improve. I will provide for our McGuffey School community. Our vision is to ensure that all students reach their greatest potential. Tonight, I think we have something that's emblematic of both. We're going to have a presentation tonight from the president of Penn Commercial, Mr. Bob Zant, along with the high school principal, Mr. Mark Bonus. They are going to talk about the partnership that we've had to this point, providing choice and options for our high school students, as well as a new opportunity, a new pilot program involving a C D L that gives students the opportunity to, again, have a career that will be possibly waiting for them by completing this program. So with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Bob Zant, Penn Commercial, Mr. Mark Bonus up to present that.
Thank you. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have a few moments here. Like, obviously, you went around. I don't think Scott was here. But this is Mr. Robert Zant. He's president of Penn Commercial here, and they are a provider for us currently with our cosmetology students, along with Western Area. We have kids who attend in the cosmetology program at both schools. We currently at Penn Commercial, and Bob, I'll give you some time to talk about this, and then we'll get into specifics of the C D L. We didn't script this, so we're sort of trying to figure it out. But currently, just, we have three students who attend Western Area in cosmetology, and we have fourteen students who attend Penn Commercial in cosmetology, both at the same cost, both at the same time. And these were students who were given the choice between the two. We currently have, my vision's not what it once was, eight tenth graders, five eleventh graders, and one twelfth grader attending cosmetology at Penn Commercial. So I don't know, Bob, if you want to talk a little bit about Penn Commercial and how it's going, and then we can get into the specifics of this new pilot opportunity.
Sure. Thank, thank you for inviting me to the board meeting here tonight. It's an honor to be here. As Mark had mentioned, we're in our second year of the Tony and Guy Cosmetology Program. And I put some statistics together so you can see our track record on how that program's been working. We're in our fifth year at Trinity with that program. Regarding the, the C D L program that we're, we're here to talk about tonight, we're going into our fourth year down at Green County at the C T C where we're servicing all the high schools in that county. Again, there's some statistics for you to look at and see the placements and attendance rate in that program as well. I'm particularly excited to be here tonight through Southwest Training and Lisa Neal, and she extended her sorrow for not being here tonight, but she fell and broke her ankle. She's the president of Southwest Training. But she had obtained a $1,000 grant for us to utilize in a pilot program. And how that came to be was, we, we had a gentleman, Ben Crawford, up here. I believe it was two years ago that did the presentation for C D L, and it was well received, as I recollect. And we did the same thing over at Trinity. And Dr. Lucas at Trinity had mentioned that they love what they're doing with welding and Tony and Guy at Penn Commercial, but their board just didn't quite have the appetite for C D L. They, they weren't quite sure that was a good fit for them. And he's pretty passionate about the program, and he called me up maybe six months ago, and he, he brought to my attention that we did a pilot program down in Green County and asked if there was a possibility of getting some grant money to do a pilot program here in Washington County. And he felt that his board would, after they saw the results, because it really is a quality program, and the results are fantastic, that the board would support that program going forward. Well, I went to Lisa Neal. She secured a $50,000 grant, and I didn't, I didn't think it was fair just to give that to Trinity, even though they wanted it. I thought, let's, let's share the wealth here. And so that 25,000 of that is coming to McGuffey if you participate in this. And it's, it's just a wonderful opportunity. Lisa Neal's Southwest Training, and we can go through the numbers in detail, but Lisa Neal is aiding that stipends with roughly a $1,000 stipends from Southwest Training. And that brings the cost down to roughly $250, which, you know, if, if that is a problem for the district or the students, Penn Commercial is willing to absorb that just to get this pilot program off the ground.
And that would be a cost per student?
Yes, that's correct. So. Yeah, just talking about the, the program in general, our, the, the program, if you would like, would take place here. It's a 220-hour program. It runs over one semester. If you provide a classroom here, then we would come here, we would do the 40 hours of classroom instruction. After that 40 hours, we're 180 hours on the road. So our, our semi truck would come here, pick the students up, and this is where they would start their class day. Now, if you would prefer the classroom activity to take place at Penn Commercial, we can accommodate that as well. But we're, we're very flexible there. So it, I, I, I think of it like down in Green County, it's a mobile classroom. We, we can take this to wherever's needed. Included in the costs are a drug test, a background check, a physical, their permit, and at the end of the program, the cost to get, take the, the final C D L exam to have that endorsement added to their driver's license. So it's a, it's a turnkey proposition. There's no added costs. There's, every, everything is included. Any questions?
A moment, Mr. Bonus, do you have? Let's get the idea.
So I wrote up a, a couple things here. Obviously, it's split. The proceeds of that $50,000 grant, it actually comes from E Q T Corporation, who is giving that money to Southwest Training, and Southwest Training has chosen Penn Commercial as the provider of that grant. So it won't be paid back. There's no strings attached with it from E Q T for the kids who participate in this program either, right? They have to, they have to drop for them or anything like that. No, no, no strings attached.
What is the cost of the program if you weren't talking about the grant? Someone just came in and took the program.
The cost of, of completing this training is $7,500. So the cost of the grant is, we're getting 25,000, half of the 50, would be 6250 times four. And then Southwest Training is giving another thousand, so that takes the cost down to $250 per student.
Wow.
And that would be a, you know, this is a $7,500 program that they can do during the school day, that they could have their C D L license by the time they graduated this year from, from high school. Now, a couple things. This is at no cost to the district. The 250, like I said, will, will find a way to cover those proceeds, whether it comes from the family or Penn Commercial or whoever, but it would be at no cost to the school district at all. The only thing we would be providing is the classroom up here. Obviously, we'd make adjustments to the schedule. Kids who would be eligible to do this would have to be 18 years of old, eight. That's about 66 out of 105 of our senior class, about 63 percent would be eligible for this. We would be locked in at four students, four students here in the morning, in the same slot that currently Western Area and Penn Commercial attend in that timeframe. So we would be the morning school. Trinity would be the afternoon school, because this, this, the person who gets to hire for a driver would go up and do the training on site up at Trinity. So eight kids were here or there, evenly split. You understand?
Yes, okay. That's, you're, you're right.
So we'd have to adjust to their schedules, but they have to be 18. It would not be a student who currently attends Western Area or Penn Commercial, because we've already paid for them to attend the program this year, and that would be fair for us to pay, because they wouldn't be able to do much, right? So it would have to be a student who would be here during the school day, and we'd have to make adjustments to their schedule to award credit for this. Similar to what we would do if a student attended the C T C program here, the four hours that they would get. So it sort of fits nice and neat into that same slot, same credit, and just an adjustment of the graduation requirements for the four participants. Okay? They would have to have a P A driver's license. They'd have to pass drug screenings and the background check, as Bob said. We would mandate that they have good attendance history and good academic progress. We're not going to, you know, give an opportunity, you have to be at school. Like, you have to have a good process, and we'll do an application that has some of that criteria with point system for it, if we have more than four than any one of them. They would, they would obviously have to complete that district application, and parents would have to agree to it as well. And then these credits that they get, this C D L program, would become their high school graduation requirement. They will replace certain courses that they're currently enrolled in and fill in and equal those credits. Because when you're doing things in the middle of the year, not knowing this opportunity was going to be available, we're adjusting sort of on the fly. All insurance costs are covered by Penn Commercial. There's no liability, all the insurance that is handled. From them, as Bob said, it would equal out to 45 hours of truck time after the 40 hours of theory time. Instructor would come here onsite, provide that instruction, and those students would sort of follow that schedule. As a, students would basically have a Class A commercial driver's license, commercial vehicle license with air brake and tanker endorsement at the end of it. So they're not only getting the C D L, they're getting them the endorsement that would allow them to walk out and actually walk into a truck. Talking about, there's some current statistics from the U S Department of Labor that I just put out. The job outlook for C D L drivers is set to increase by 4% over the next decade, and the median salary for a tractor-trailer driver is $50,000. It's actually 49.9, but that's the median, median wage. Demand in Pennsylvania is higher than the national average due to the preponderance of manufacturing that we have in this area. I mean, our tractor-trailer traffic is much higher than other areas of the country. I think everybody recognizes that as they fight their way through the interstate of Southwest of Pennsylvania. But I, I, you know, part of this is, and part of my responsibilities, and as Dr. Huber said as well, and work with him, is for us to search out opportunities for kids. And we know the cost is, is an option. I have not shared this with the kids, say, hey, sign up for this, because it hasn't gone through this approval process. But I have sort of talked to a teach, a couple teachers who have sort of said, how many do you think we could have? Is this something you think it could work out in our favor, and we would have kids that want to participate in this? And they looked at me and like, they're kidding, right? Like, we have some students that would, would jump on this opportunity. So I feel confident that we could, we could secure four here. I know the Trinity Area School District is actually looking at approving the same agreement tonight at their board meeting. So obviously, with the second semester coming mid-January, we're looking at sort of having the time to, to work that out, to get the permissions, to get the background checks, to just make sure they have driver's license, all those things and all those pieces. But I think it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for some of our students who, to walk out of here with something they might not have expected at the beginning of the year and be able to have that living wage and at no cost. I think it's a great opportunity. I've never heard of a high school that's done this, none that I know of. Your program down Green County actually runs through their West, through their Vettec, right? It goes through their C D C. So these are kids who are attending Green County C D C, getting a program there. We're talking about actually housing it here in a Trinity to do it for students who are in a, a known C D C program or did start there this year. So, and once again, it's our responsibility to bring this opportunity to you. We think it's a great one, or we want to move forward with it and work to sort out the details. Southwest Training, I think them throwing in $1,000 shows that they're invested into it as well. I think Bob's going to accept this as much less than, somewhat less than what you would charge an adult student or any other student who does this program is sort of a testament to our relationship with, with them.
Okay, before you, Mr. Leader, and then we'll go to you.
I have a question for each of you. Mr. Bonus, how would you select the student?
Well, one, they have to have, you know, 18, they have to have driver's license, they have to have clean drive.
Yeah, but I mean, if you have all that and you have 10 students.
I think it's just going to have to come up with a point system based on attendance, things that are specific that you can sort of go back to, things that are objective, not necessarily subjective. If we have more than four, then we'll do an application with a rubric that ties it to academic performance, attendance. I, I don't know how far we'd have to go down there, but it would have to be a process that's fair and equitable.
And Bob, the question I have is, how many students does the grant cover? The $25,000, will that cover all of our students that want to go through this program? Or is it only cover a limited amount of students? Or I guess how far does the $25,000 go? Well, it would cover the four students, yes. It would cover the four students in the pilot program in the spring semester. Okay. Then in, let's say, the fall, we started again, and we didn't have the grant. Do you have a cost on what it would cost the district in the future? Because once we get started, I have a feeling it will be hard to stop. Well, I, I can tell you that in the time we've been down in Green County, four years, we've not raised our prices. And we've, we've really had to absorb a lot in doing that. The price, I'm sure you all know, the price of diesel, his, fuel in general has gone up, labor, insurance. Everything associated with running a tractor-trailer has increased. I, I can tell you that $7,500 is the price if somebody comes off of the street, they're, they're taking the program.
I can tell you that. My husband did your program. And that's not the price.
So that, that is the, the current price, but being a good neighbor with McGuffey here, we would certainly take a look and negotiate on that price if this thing were to go forward once the, the grant expires.
And would seek other grant opportunities?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think, I think everybody involved, like E Q T, Southwest Training, they're all watching to see if this, I mean, that's what a pilot is, right? We're going to see this, see if it's something that can work, and then maybe we can expand it to other corporations that would be willing to help.
Or more.
And, and their measurement is going to be what happens to these four students after the program completes.
Did you have any other question, Mr. Harden?
Just the one, for clarity, the students will be taking the driver part here at the school as well. They'll be leaving from here in a truck. Is that correct?
Yes, they'll be taking the didactic portion in the.
Yeah, and we got room for that. I mean, like, we don't have any, the full make sure. Yeah, I know that, but I mean, they are going to be driving from here, you know, go around the building or whatever. First things first, but no, okay. Yeah, I think it's great.
Just to give you a perspective, my husband actually ended up being an older displaced worker. That's how he ended up doing the program. But he then, when he applied to Penn Dot, that, because he had that, that certification bumped him up to the top level of drivers for Penn Dot and bypassed some of their own certifications within. So I mean, there's quality there. It, it means something, and it's recognized in the driving community, so.
I think everybody agrees that part of transportation is actually one of the biggest hires of C D L, I C S for them.
All the time.
For the winter and maybe to help our road a little.
When we were putting our statistics together for Green County, I know that Penn Dot is one of the larger employers that seek those graduates. And they come in and they talk to the graduating class, and surprisingly, not all the, the graduates of that program go to work for Penn Dot. And surprisingly, not all the the graduates of that program go to work for Penn Dot. They go to work for other companies that are paying more than Penn Dot. And Penn Dot pays a pretty nice, uh, buck, and and they have a pretty nice retirement package.
But they'll also take drivers who are eighteen, whereas a lot of the truck-driving companies have more restrictions on age. So some of them put in time to get experience and then move on as well. Right.
On on that note, I'll, I'll say that when we put our program together, uh, most of the programs in the state were four weeks. And and I'm talking a dedicated time, uh, the same two-hundred-and-twenty hours. Well, I'm sorry, uh, a hundred-and-eighty hours in those programs. And, uh, the the state had come out with some new requirements requiring two-hundred-and-twenty hours. When I put our team together and they looked over, uh, the landscape of what the, uh, other schools were doing, they said, how, how are we gonna sell this program? Everybody else has a four-week program, we have a six-week program, how do we sell that? And so we, we, we just jumped into it, and the the students came along. And after we ran that for about six months, uh, the gentleman, Ben Crawford, who was out here speaking to you all, uh, came to me and said, you know, that six-week program turned out to be a godsend. And I said, how's that, Ben? And he said, we are getting our students hired in companies that would not hire somebody out of the school because of those extra hours and the safety that those extra hours is proving to provide.
Plus, they brought in, like, speakers and, uh, representatives from driving companies and everything, not memories or.
And we would do the same thing here.
Right.
I would, I'd like to say thank you for considering us, along with Trinity, because my grandson, who graduated from here and was attending VOTEC, he got a, a degree from them, I mean, his certificate from there. He was offered the opportunity to do the CDL, and he did that, and it cost him a lot more than two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Lucker?
Do we have four students that are eighteen years old that are able to do that?
Yeah, we have about sixty-six percent of our senior class will be eighteen by the end of, of second week, the beginning of the second week of February, which is just the amount of timeline that they would need. Bob, I mean, they could start with the forty hours in the classroom, but they're going to turn.
That was one of my questions. So like, if you have somebody who.
You're on the cusp.
Yeah. Like, you, you turn eighteen in February.
Okay, so they can, they can still be right on that cusp when they start the, the.
Classroom.
Classroom, but they have to be eighteen when they start the draw.
Right.
That's, I I heard you say the sixty-six percent, but I wanted to make sure that we did, okay.
The the last portion of that classroom, they go to Penn Dot.
Right.
And take, take an exam to get their permit, and they have to be eighteen when they walk in to take that exam. They don't have to be eighteen to start out in the classroom.
I think it's a fantastic, phenomenal program, thank you very much.
It's actually sixty-six kids, which is sixty-three percent of the.
I thought you said sixty-one percent.
And this, like I said, this is like a pilot, this, this, the driver instructor will be your employee, not ours.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
The vehicle will be yours, and leased by you, um.
Hold on, Mr. Devin, I just want to be clear, too, this agreement is for, we're considering it to just be for pilot here.
Correct.
Yes.
And that doesn't obligate us anywhere forward. Like, pilot is to kick the tires, see what works, see what's, yeah, and it doesn't obligate us in any way. But it has to be during the second semester of this school year.
And I'm assuming because of the grant, like, there's a timeline here, it needs to be done tonight.
You know, not, none of, when I look at a, a contract, where, like, we have with a school district, I don't look at that as an obligation, I look at that as an opportunity. If at any point along the way, uh, somebody becomes unhappy with that, uh, uh, contract or opportunity, uh, it it only takes a phone call to say, hey, we're, we're not happy with this, and we're shifting gears. And we would understand that.
Well, I appreciate you both doing your presentation. Any other questions?
Well, I would just like to make, um, or ask the board to consider, uh, this is not on the agenda tonight, to add the agreement for CDL training with Penn Commercial, uh, at no cost to the district, uh, be added to the agenda pending, uh, school's first term.
So just so that I'm clear, that we would just need, add the time of the meeting, somebody to make a motion, to amend the motion, to add it, correct?
Correct, I would suggest you do add it, um, before public participation, so the public has the right to comment.
So right at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item I have tonight, um, you'll notice on the agenda, we have a, a number of capital projects on the agenda uh, that is seeking board approval. To discuss the bond issue that, uh, started in twenty-twenty-one and how the funds have been spent to this point and can be spent in the future, I'm gonna ask Mr. Devin Engelman to come up and present that. Devin, I believe, Laura, we, we had this in the package, the.
Yes.
That's from twenty-twenty-one?
They do have this backup detail of the, um, capital, the D sheet. So I wanted to summarize, in twenty, November of twenty-twenty-one, you refinanced a bond, you got a little bit of extra money to go into a capital project fund. Since that time, you have earned roughly a hundred-and-forty thousand in interest on this money. And we've done the high school roof, uh, Joe Walker roof, we've sta- painted the stadium, there's been floor projects done, alarm systems installed, um, the sewage plant, we started on that. We purchased some smart boards, and we're doing the high school steel door replacements, Joe Walker window replacements. Those are all things that have already been paid for, and they're already completed with this money. We do have, um, and I believe you have this in your packet also, it's a, a summary of what has been board approved, it's in the works, and what ideas we have for the remainder of the money. So the money needs to be spent by October of twenty-four in order not to fall out of compliance. Um, so right now, currently approved is the chiller, the HVAC controls, uh, the sewage plant, which Lee has been paid for, the Todd Lane boilers. Um, I'm not sure if they're complete yet, but we did pay for a portion of them. And then the high school doors, I think that the high school doors are, I just made the final payment, that's on the board approval for tonight. That would take up about, and I can't see, I'm sorry, about one-point-three million of what is currently left. And currently, right now, it's one-point-six. So the, because this money is earning interest every month, the projections that we have moving forward are, um, repairs of the tennis courts, a new high school gym scoreboard, new lighting for the stage, a zero-turn tractor for our maintenance department, and we wanted to finish the inter, the purchase of the interactive display boards for all the classrooms. According to my projections, we're like twenty-eight thousand dollars short. But as this goes and we earn interest, we should, that should wash out. It should be, you have enough money to do all of these things.
And I was just gonna add, um, you'll notice future projects for tennis courts are currently, this is what we've set aside for that. Um, there's an additional ten-thousand dollars Dick's donation, actually was a grant, um, that Caitlin Group, uh, was awarded. Um, currently, because of the situation we're having with the water and and what it's doing to, uh, all the courts, but certainly Court Number Four, uh, Craig has hired a team to come in and do a core drilling to see what in fact is happening underneath the court right now. And based on, on, uh, the drillings and what we find from that, we'll determine whether or not we shave it down and resurface it back up, or we put on a top layer that will last us over five to seven years. It's all, it's really gonna depend on what type of work and what's the cost of it.
Are there any questions? So we've looked at this money and the projects that need to be done. There's also, um, a capital project fund that is not tied to the bond, that has a little bit of money in it for other projects as they come up. That's something they try to contribute a little bit to every year, and it's sitting there when it's needed.
And and actually, one more item, too, uh, in regards to the stage lighting in the auditorium. Uh, you may recall, back in the late spring, uh, some of the groups came to us and they were offering fifteen thousand. And so what we have said to them is, we will take care of the lighting system. Uh, but there are some additional needs, there's additional, um, microphones, but also they've asked for that back curtain to, to be fixed. And we suggested, instead of, we, we do not need your fifteen thousand, but we would suggest, in good faith, putting that money towards those curtains and, uh, the speakers, I mean, the, uh, microphones, sorry.
What is the zero-turn tractor? Just that in curiosity.
Oh, I know that, but I didn't like.
It's one, it's one of those ones that's got handlebars on it.
Yeah. Oh, oh, okay, rather than a. Yeah.
I believe it's a bigger tractor, so it will help with the hills on the, on the slopes.
Have a lower center of gravity, which is what you need on the side.
On the heels. Mm-hmm.
I don't know none, but okay.
And who is it?
Any questions for them?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Madam President, that is all I have for committee.
Okay, at this point, then, we are gonna call an, um, end to committee meeting at six-thirty-two P M. And we will meet, um, back for the regular meeting at, what time you guys wanna do? Six forty-five? Yep, six forty-five P M, meeting adjourned. Okay, I'm gonna call to order at six forty-six, the regularly monthly meeting for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call fees.
Mr. Haynes.
I'm here.
Mr. Harden.
Here.
Daphne.
Present.
Mr. Kern. Mr. Lager.
Here.
Miss Liveheart.
Here.
Mr. Ross. Ms. Jingle.
Present.
Mr. Vanatta.
Here.
Could you please join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I believe we have some recognition. Mr. Welk. Oh, Ms. Augustine, sorry.
Good evening.
Oh, okay.
Max Kelly is our McGuffey Middle School student of the month for November.
Thank you.
The student of the month is nominated and voted on by the teachers. Max shows consistent preparation, respect, involvement, dedication, and empathy to the middle school. We are proud of him and his attributes to McGuffey Middle School. Max is currently an eighth grade student. He is an active member of the National Junior Honor Society and has maintained a four-point-oh since the start of his three years in middle. Max spent his three time on the ice playing hockey for South Pittsburgh Rebellion's hockey team. He would like to give a shout out to Mr. Perry. Jim has always been what he is loved to the most. One of his best memories have happened with Mr. Perry. Max's advice for his peers is to always do your homework. It does actually pay off. Max, we are honored to have you at McGuffey Middle School.
Congratulations, congratulations. And he's done. Congratulations to mom, too. Okay, high school student council representative?
Hi, I'm Reece T. Garden. I'm here on behalf of McGuffey Student Council. I'd first like to say I think I made school history. Week one football during Southmoreland, I broke my first and second metacarpal during the game. I had a cast for six weeks, it healed, I took the cast off. Last Friday versus Washington, I broke my fourth metacarpal during the game. So, I'm back in a splint and so I just think I made school history with breaking your metacarpals twice in one season. Just throwing that out there, if anybody wants to congratulate me? All right, okay, start with the school update. The National Honor Society held its induction ceremony last night. Twenty-six juniors and eighteen, uh, joined eighteen members, senior members. Our guest speaker was Dr. Kayla Backsindale, who's a twenty-sixteen graduate from McGuffey. Uh, McGuffey High School recent recognition by the College Board on the A.P. School Honor Roll was awarded to only thirty percent of high schools nationwide. McGuffey joined Cannon-Mack High School, Sharpier's, and Peters Township as the only schools in Washington County to receive placement on the A.P. School Honor Roll. McGuffey High School, along with middle school, hosted over seventy-five community veterans at the luncheon held last Friday. The saxophone assembly in Highlander Harmony performed, and Colonel Mark Weaver retired from the service was our guest speaker. McGuffey Student Council, FFA, and teen action all participated in this truly special event. The National Honor Society will be hosting its first blood drive since twenty nineteen on December twentieth. Uh, our sports update. The fall sports season was concluded with the football team's quarterfinal loss on Friday. It was the football team's sixth consecutive playoff appearance. Uh, it was also the eighth time in school history the football team has won eight or more games in a season and the fourth time that has occurred since twenty fourteen. The cross-country team advanced three runners to the P.I.A. double A state finals. Brady Higerman, Alai Udale, and Ben Payette, all three had personal bests and received McGuffey very well. We also won the championship, section championship, boys and girls cross-country. Overall, fall sports had three section champs teams and seven out of nine teams made the Whipple playoffs. Winter sports begins officially tomorrow. Uh, not to put any pressure on these sports, but we're hoping for a strong season out of our boys' basketball, girls' basketball, rifle, and wrestling. We're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. At this time, I am looking for a motion to amend the agenda to add a superintendent's report, item number five. A motion to approve the pilot program for C.D.L. training agreement with ten commercials upon final contract approval by the solicitor at no cost to the district. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. I'm gonna send that down just for the wording to our secretary. Thank you. At this time, we have, um, public comments on agenda items. Chief?
Madam President, we have two. First, let's call Vicki Jordan.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I just wanted to touch base again on the P.A.'s survey, since it's again on the agenda. Um, I asked at the last meeting that our Solicitor Research Section fifteen twenty-six of the school code, which states, uh, in any situation where students express thought or intention to self-harm on school property, that it must be reported. So, again, on this P.A.'s survey, those are some of the questions that are asked. And I know it's anonymous, but in the code, it specifically states it applies in any situation on school property. So I think before you vote on this, you need to know if that puts us liable regardless of whether it's anonymous or not. Um, again, I have objections to it. If it was tenth and twelfth, I probably wouldn't feel as strongly as I do as exposing our sixth and eighth graders to some of the questions on this. I'm hoping you all took the time to review the survey. Um, I don't feel data-mining our children for purposes that could potentially put us at li... make us liable. And not only financially, but morally. So you have a student express ideations of suicide. And it's done right here in the school, under everybody's noses. And because it's anonymous, nobody acts. It's kinda scary thought. So, I really hope you look long and hard in your hearts before you vote on this survey. I know that Mr. Vanatta put a lot of work into why he felt it's something we should participate in. But we're talking about our homegrown students. We're not talking about how it benefits outside of us. Um, moving on from that, I'm just, I bring these up every time. Uh, there's a request to travel, you guys already always approve them all. At some point, they just keep adding up and adding up and adding up. I know none of these are in the budget, but this particular one is marching band and choir overnight travel to Cleveland. Um, it's for a tour of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and a visit to Cedar Point. I get the FFA one, like they're going to something that is part of their curriculum. Um, but I just wish you guys would look at some of these closer before you just rubber stamp them. I see that the superintendent's contract is on the agenda. Are you sure you want another five years, Dr. Ober? Because we're asking for a whole lot of transparency moving forward with this new board. I'm not speaking out against you, I'm just saying, you sure you want it? Uh, and then the only thing, the other thing I wanna bring up is the volunteers for the musical. And you might think this is side note or non-agenda, but I hope there's more ayes on the program that's gonna be presented this year because of what happened last year. And I believe that's all I have for you guys tonight. Please think hard on this P.A.'s survey. And if you're going to vote for it, can you consider maybe just limiting it to the high school students? And not the sixth and eighth graders? I mean, three genders, male, female, other.
What was the part of the school code that you were asking about?
It is section fifteen twenty-six of the school code.
That's what I thought you said.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we call Monique Frye.
Good evening, Monique Frye, Morris Township. I only have two topics that I'd like to talk about this evening. Um, my first one is also the P.A.'s survey. Um, I know it states that it's anonymous. Um, and with my knowledge of personal information, there are questions on that survey that are asked that are identifying pieces of information. Age, race, gender, ethnicity, those are all identifying pieces of information. Once that survey is completed and the, um, the state gets their answers and everything, they send reports to the superintendent at the end of the year with, um, per grade, it's a per grade report. So it's the questions per grade that is reported to the superintendent. Now, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, I think it's pronounced "neech," um, N-E-I-C-H-E. It's a website that school districts are, are voted on, on, on different things, different statistics. Now, McGuffey School District has one point one percent of Hispanic students, according to that website. I don't think it takes a whole lot of thought to put into it to find out. If a student says how old they are, what their race is, what their gender is, what their ethnicity is, and whether or not they're Hispanic, then the superintendent gets a report that states this is the grade that these answers come from. One point one percent, you can find out who that student is. I think the way that this survey is presented to school districts from the state is misleading and deceptive. Now, that just pertains to McGuffey, other school districts have different statistics. But I try to say what's going on here. I'm asking you to, one, vote no for this. I think it's very invasive. If you're going to vote yes, I'm asking you to, instead of make it where it's an opt-out, opt it in. Even the surveys from P.A.'s says that is an option. I would like that to be an option. We shouldn't be assuming the parents know what this is. If it weren't for me doing the research for myself, I would not have known. And again, I find that deceitful. So again, I'm asking you to vote no to the survey from McGuffey School District as a whole. Um, I even thought about asking, give it to students who are the age of eighteen or older because they're adults and they can disclose that information freely. But that narrows it down even more to who, who says what on that survey. My second item is, uh, the superintendent appointment. I wanted to ask first, is the seven-one-twenty-three date a typo? I know I came in a little bit later, I didn't know if that was caught. Is that supposed to read July first of twenty twenty-four?
I'm sorry, for the...
For the superintendent's appointment? It states, um, superintendent to a five-year contract beginning July first of twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
So is it supposed to be the twenty twenty-four? Okay. I didn't wanna say too much more if it was already done with.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, with the, um, with the superintendent appointment, I'm asking you to table it until at least January or February, um, or however far out we can table it for. We have multiple new school board members that are joining the team here at McGuffey in just a couple months, less than a couple months. Um, next month, yes, we are in November already. Um, if it's not expiring until at least mid-two thousand twenty-four, the new school board director should have a say in a five-year contract that's going to extend the life of their term here at McGuffey School District. We have three years. If we only have three years and you're voting on five years for a superintendent, we have no say in that. I don't think that's right. Um, I would say fair, but we know life isn't fair. I do think that it should, we should have the district give the new school board members a chance to get to know the superintendent on that school board district, on that school board director level, and have a say in that contract. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Laura, just to be clear, on the superintendent's appointment, this dates to the July first, two thousand twenty-four, and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine.
I, I...
Yeah. Right? Twenty twenty-four. And two thousand twenty-nine. So just so that we can correct. Thank you. Okay, is that it, chief? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, school board meeting estimated.
So moved.
All those in favor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three to November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, check seven-eight-three-nine-four to seven-eight-five-three-nine in the amount of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, check seven-seven-two-six to seven-seven-two-eight in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-three, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the G O B series twenty-twenty-one bill list, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one bill list dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, check two-one-zero-three-nine through two-one-zero-four in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty cents, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to accept the donation of a snowboard and boots and helmet valued at six hundred dollars from Amy Schrumpf from McGuffey High School District Policy Number seven-oh-two Gift Grants and Donations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you giving it up?
No, I'm keeping my keys and giving it my snowboard. Or are there any who are opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. And thank you. I need a motion to approve students in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve to participate in the two thousand twenty Pennsylvania Youth Survey paid at no cost to the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we make it an opt-in? So...
I'd have to look at that. Did you hear the question?
Can we make it an opt-in, Mark?
Get opt-out. Me.
And that's, I think, the dilemma for me, because I've worked, I've, I've worked crisis intervention. And everybody cries about what are we doing as a society to help with mental health issues and all of these other societal problems. This is one of the ways. Like, there, and when, and when you work crisis intervention, you work in that field, there is a limited amount of funds to be able to do. And every bit of funding that you apply for is directly linked to data. It is. Uh, and if you don't have the data, you won't get the funding, and I know that. Um, so I, for me, it's like a, between a rock and a hard place. I get the concerns, uh, of the families and the parents, but I also truly understand the value of the data that is used for those kinds of programs throughout our county.
Well, that, that goes for the grants here as well. If you apply for a P C C D Safe Schools Grant or a P D E Safe Schools Grant, it asks you for your PACE data as part of the application. So you automatically lose points if you don't have that information.
I, I just want to say, and to some of the public's concerns, I did look at that survey, and there's some questions on there that I struggled with. But, uh, we've done this survey how many times, Mr. Bonus? Since the pandemic.
Yeah, we probably have done it every other year. I've been here twenty-six, my twenty-first year.
Yeah. And I can, I tell you, the English, it's usually done in the English class. And when they're done with their survey, it goes into a brown envelope and it's sent off. Nobody looks at it. I, it's just, that's how it's always been done. But I remember covering in English class, and that's how it was done. Um, it's, there's, it's not, I, I get the concern, but, um, there are a lot of people, not just our community, but other communities that need a lot of help. And, uh...
Okay, I will have the solicitors, um, address that, but just to keep in mind that it's... Sorry, go ahead. So section, section fifteen twenty-six of the school code does not say that. Section fifteen twenty-six of the school code requires a school entity to adopt a youth, a youth suicide awareness and prevention policy. And then it describes what P D E would like that policy to say. That is all section fifteen twenty-six requires. I have a copy of it here if any of you would like to see it.
Do we have a policy for...
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're giving this survey to the same students every other year. So we're not giving it to different students. Do you, we're giving it to sixth, eighth, ten, and twelve. So every two years, that same student is getting the same survey. So we're not, do you see where I'm coming from on this?
Absolutely. It's, again, it's something that, that PACE does, it's not something that we...
I understand, I understand that.
No, I understand what you're saying, too.
It's just...
And I would, and you're right, it seems redundant.
Yeah.
But the, I would, I would suggest, having been taught from third grade up in all those classes, that social pressures, different things at different times, changes with age.
Exactly, I agree.
And that, to me, I, I, I don't know why we don't do different grades at different times. That's a good question. But I can understand that as they mature, that the social pressure, the alcohol in a sixth grade is probably not going to be the pressure to drink.
The same as a ten or twelve.
As, as ten or twelve.
Exactly.
So it changes, I get that.
But what about the drug trends? I mean, the drug trends today are nowhere near what they were five years ago, or ten years ago. I mean, uh, so kids are doing different substances.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, different formats of substances.
It just seems that they, they would want to switch it up maybe a little. You know, why not do, oh, you know, nine and eleven one year and ten and twelve one year? I, you know.
But again, we don't control the...
I understand that, I understand that.
You can't, I'm sorry.
Michelle, one, one of the reasons why I think they do it the way they do it is because they have a continuity of the same students for a longer period of time. And that makes their data more useful rather than random...
More consistent.
More than randomly changing all the time.
Okay.
And that, that would be my guess.
Okay.
I have one question. We did say that parents can opt-out.
And Mr. Bonus has been, has done a great job at providing, he will provide to parents the information. They, um, last month, we talked about, um, offering them the opt-out, both online and if they requested it, a paper copy. So... So the one call to the parents would say the date that we're giving it, and if you want to opt-out, you would opt her out? Right.
Could we do the one call more than once?
Yes, you just said that.
One call, probably the one call.
Well, he's going to give it to you.
So they can research it.
Yeah. Correct. And if in the middle of it, they volunteer? Okay, I'm sorry, I can't do, I know, but I can't, it's not the way the protocol works, I'm sorry. The zero, what was that?
The zero turn.
The zero turn tracker. Are there any other boards among the board, or there's any other discussion?
I don't want to sound redundant here, but what most of us here have been parents or guardians at some, guardians at some point. I'm sorry, that some of the responsibility does lie at your doorstep. Communicate with your kids, and believe me, I've had teen answers, I know that can be challenging. But the fact is...
Which one was that?
But the fact is, that is your job as a parent. I do have one question for Mr. Bonus. If my child is absent on that day, wouldn't they come back and someone say, hey, you missed it yesterday, here it is today? Okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
Any other board member have any other questions? Or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the marching band choir overnight travel to Cleveland in Sandusky, Ohio on April twelfth through thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at a cost of five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, this money is just to cover the substitutes.
Correct.
It's not anything for, involving the trip.
Correct.
The teacher could actually be off on that day.
I believe the boosters really cover the cost of that.
I know, but I'm just saying, the teacher could technically be off on his own vacation that day, and we would have to cover his class for the substitute.
Okay, thank you.
Be a lot easier to stay in the classroom.
Believe me, I've always said that. Preparing to be out of the classroom is much more difficult. Thank you. Uh-huh. Any other discussion?
Actually, I would bet, well, middle school bands aren't going to, yeah, they got to cover those classes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the waiver, formal hearing, and agreement for student A as per the terms and conditions of the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Abstention. Motion carries. Dr. Ober, do we have need... Oh, wait, sorry, yes. I'm sorry. I need that paper back. That's why I didn't remember, thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve the pilot program for C D L training agreement with some commercial upon final contract approval by the solicitor at no cost to the district.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I just had a question for Mark. Um, wha- what happened the last time we tried this?
Last time, we, we threw a three-year C D L agreement up and worked this out. But remember, the cost was basically the same cost that was with sending two schoolgirls there, and so it was a lot more expensive for us, which was probably a bigger issue. But I didn't, I, I had two kids, but I didn't have a first kid. Um, if one is to live...
So we never did it?
Yeah, and Trinity, and Trinity didn't have four. In order for it to work, he needs eight, four technical areas, or eight or one school in order to offset the cost of hiring and draft.
Right.
But we didn't, we just haven't had enough history. But I, I think we're going to have four. So that sort of helps the kids, that who's interested in it, add an assembly, add an organization, something to talk to teachers about. Anybody interested in, I've always had a friend, but never four, so I think that'll change.
All right, good.
Any other...
My, my question is, I, I think the pilot program, and this is all great, but what happens next year whenever we don't have the grant money? How are we going to handle that amount of money?
It's very, I'm, I'm asking, isn't it the same equivalent as to sending them to VOTEC or to... Is it, was it, it's about the same cost?
He said seventy-five, I heard him say seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
But what is it, isn't it something like sixty-seven hundred or something for...
It's about seventy-three hundred for four years.
Yeah. Yeah.
But he also said that he would work with McGuffey.
Yeah.
And it's not something, you're not, you're only signing a contract for this particular...
Yeah.
I got, I got all that, I got all that.
He also said that they would continue to explore other granting opportunities. And I do think you're, he's right in, and I think you both spoke to this. These companies are going to be watching the pilot program. And, you know, the success of that might bring other companies on board, which may provide more scholarships or more granting opportunities. But it, I can't predict the future.
I, I know. I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, are we going to be able to... Once you offer something like this, and these students go through it, and they have a good time, and they tell everybody, next year, they're going to think that they're going to be able to do it. Are we going to be able to afford to do that? Or, I know it's kind of hard to tell and forecast the future, but hopefully, we could get other companies to get grants to do it. I just am concerned about offering something and then not offering it again.
And I guess that... Yeah, and I don't think it makes much sense to deny students the opportunity now.
No, it doesn't.
Because we may not be able to offer it later.
If you think, you're talking, as I was listening to the program, what they're offering, it would only pretty much mark by what you described as the age-eligible students' second semester.
Right.
So you're talking, you're only going to get four a year to get ready to it. So you're talking fifteen thousand, no, thirty thousand dollars is what it would cost you going forward if we didn't get grants or if you didn't get...
Right.
And, Mark, does this still rely on Trinity? Like, if they can't get four, we, we're out?
So let's say we got three, and Trinity got five, and we work it out between, right? As long as we can provide the same, if we got five and they got three.
Well, so if they didn't get any and we got eight, we could get all the grant money?
It's a theory.
It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, it is.
Right, I remember that. Um, yeah. Yeah.
We didn't have a partner, so it was all enough to get all eight. This is the first time, another, uh, I was hoping to maybe get another school district that went through. This is the first time we had another partner, Trinity, set up that, and they said, well, I could use your class, I couldn't get four, I know I couldn't get eight. This is, this is sort of like a good thing.
Well, it's awesome. I mean, it gives you four.
Agreed.
And especially since they have that revisibility, or the flexibility of turning eighteen within the classroom hours, too. Like, that's...
Uh, I think it's going to give four students an awesome opportunity of a lifetime, actually, and probably changes their lives, maybe for... and probably changes their lives, maybe forever. And I, I would definitely highly recommend we do it. My concern is, are we going to be able to force down there? That's all.
Yes, I don't know, but...
And Dave, and the question I'd have for you is, has the VOTEC talked anything at all about this?
Yes, but the CDL program at Western Union Career is an adult ed program.
It's an evening, right?
Because the students that we have down there, either morning or afternoon...
Are in eighteen.
Well, some of them could be eighteen, but the problem is, they're only down there for X number of hours in the morning. They don't have time to do the required hours for their, for their classes and take the CDL. We do have a CDL instructor and a CDL tester, but it's adult ed in the evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Abstention? Motion carries. Do we have need of an executive session?
Madam President, we do. Contracts and personnel.
Need a motion?
Make a motion, we go to executive session.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Abstention? Motion carries. We are in executive session at seven twenty-three PM.